Okay, it's one thirty. It is now one thirty. This is the Oklahoma County Planning Commission Room two oh four, one thirty, May fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Notice this meeting was posted on May ninth. Call the order. Roll call Eric.
Yes, the members of the planning commission today are Mr. Gary Jewell, Ms. Denise Patterson, Mr. Rob Talbot, and Mr. Greg Davidson.
Here. Okay, item number five. The item was deferred by the PC at the request of the applicant on April seventeen. Oh, no, sorry. Item number four, approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Everybody got a copy of the minutes? Any changes? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Second. Roll call Eric.
Mr. Jewell, Ms. Patterson, Mr. Talbot, and Mr. Davidson.
Yes. All right, now, item number five. Item was deferred by the PC at the request of the applicant at the April seventeen, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting. Discussion and possible action to approve slash deny the preliminary plot of Waterloo Ridge Estates PP twenty twenty five dash O two. Eric?
Yes, so the applicant had contacted me on Tuesday, and there was discussion they want to withdraw the application at this time. They think it may be a little bit before they come to a solution on the problems that we're having out there, so they're asking that we withdraw the item.
Okay, so at this point, we just need to make a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the withdrawal for item number five. Second. Roll call Eric.
Mr. Jewell, Ms. Patterson, Mr. Talbot, and Mr. Davidson.
Yes. Okay, item number six. Item was deferred by the PC at the request of the applicant at the April seventeen, twenty twenty five PC meeting. Discussion possible action to approve slash deny the zoning change from R two Rural Residential District to a plain unit development P U D twenty twenty five dash O one, MacArthur Hills. Eric?
They are asking that this item be withdrawn as well. They're still in discussions with Deer Creek Water, and I got the impression it may be a little bit before a solution is reached, so they're asking withdrawal.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the withdrawal request for item number six.
Question though, do we have to have, open it up to discussion or anything? Or can we just make the motion? I mean, if anybody's here to talk against or for? I don't know if we need to do that or not. So we don't have to? Discussion, okay. Perfect, okay.
Is there a limitation when they come back for how many times they withdraw?
No, they can withdraw as many times as they want, but it's a three-month waiting period?
That's only if we vote on it. So they can, they can withdraw the item, and they can come back. They just have to meet the next deadline, and then we have to re-notify adjacent property owners. So they will be, the people that were notified initially, they will be notified again when they're bringing the application back.
Right, and the applicant will have to resubmit another fee for doing that.
Correct.
So you don't mind if they withdraw?
I don't. That's, that's up to them.
So much for getting out here at one thirty-five. Any other questions? Teasing. So we are at a motion. Did we get a second? Second, okay. Roll call Eric.
Mr. Jewell, Ms. Patterson, Mr. Talbot, and Mr. Davidson.
Yes. Okay, item number seven, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a presentation by ADA enders to the Planning Commission on Board Member Duties, Responsibilities, and Frequently Asked Legal Questions. So we can just open it up to her? We don't need to vote or anything, correct? Awesome. The floor is yours.
All right, as requested, I prepared for you, which you should have already received in your packet, kind of just a little guidance, as you will. I know that I'm talking to a lot more seasoned members today, but you know, this is going to be out there. It'll be available to anybody who's come on board. Just talking about your authority, this is just a general quick guide sheet as to what your authority is, where it lies, and the statutes, and their statutory duty and authority, and what you're really required to be doing. The role, role, role and expectations is really at the bottom of the page. And basically, before approving any application, each commissioner should, of course, read your packets ahead of time and be prepared to answer and engage and ask questions to make sure that the proposed, proposal is consistent with the goals of our master plan. Does it meet the applicable zoning and subdivision requirements? Are there any environmental impacts? And just make sure that your decision is based upon the master plan and the rules and regulations. As long as you follow the law as consistently as possible, your goal is to be as consistent as possible with the public, you know, so therefore, you know, individuals, you know, when you might not necessarily always agree with the project, but if it meets standards, it should probably be passed to keep it fair and consistent across the board. This is the role of the staff, the planning staff, as you know. Eric and his crew are, do a great job, and they will help you in every way, but they will get everything ready for you, get the packets ready for you. Legal counsel, I can ask, answer legal questions. I can give you policy, policy direction and advice, in other words, wordsmithing, but the actual policies and the planning decisions are yours and yours alone. So I can advise on open meetings, hearing notices, you know, motions, those kinds of things. That's what I'm here to help you with. The B O C C, as you know, they appoint six of the commissioners. One of the commissioners sits on the board. That, that makes up your board. They are the ones who ultimately are the decision-making authority, okay? So the, one of the reasons why we say, well, do you really have executive session authority to go into executive session with this board? You can, but most of the, because of what you're due is mostly to the public, and you're making advisory recommendations to the board, there's really not a whole lot of reasons to go into executive session for this body. But just to let you know, the, the staff is always here, but the B O C C is the final decision-maker, so for purposes of liability, per se, or lawsuits, you know, you might be called upon, but that's my job. If there's ever a lawsuit, there's, to be, if you're ever called upon to be a witness, it's my goal to redirect and try to make it so maybe you don't have to be a witness, but if you do, we will represent you as long as you're with, acting within the scope of your authority. The B O C C covers you with regard to any legal issues or anything like that, okay? This is just a procedure guide for the meetings. You guys do a great job. This might be a little bit different than what you, what you currently do, but it's not so far off. It's just a great little thing. So if our chair isn't here, and our sub-chair is maybe new, this is a good kind of a guidance of how the meeting should be conducted and how you should take up an agenda item. Best practices, cooperation is always best, good working relationships with the planning commission, the staff, the applicants, the consultants. It's critical that everybody kind of works together. The focus is always on the big picture, okay, to keep consistency in our planning and to follow the rules exactly. If there's ever a doubt, or if there's ever a, a call into question, a certain rule, if there's been a legal change, you can always ask the DA for a DA opinion as to whether or not something needs to be changed or modified. I think earlier on last year, we had a situation where we kind of wanted to grant an ordinance, but it wasn't a PUD, and they, you know, didn't quite meet something. Those, those types of things, we do occasionally revise, as you know, the planning rules and commissions. So if there's ever any category that you want to create, just note those down and, and ask questions about what's the process, because that's what you are here for. If you see a gap of where some, maybe a citizen doesn't qualify for zoning because of certain things, but they should, then that's something that we need to be looking out for and making sure that we get with staff and get, get it in our planning, our, our master planning, in our rules and policies, so that we can make sure that we are treating the public as fairly as possible when it comes to land usage. Open and respectful communications. Chairman, you have, always have the floor, and you are the parliamentarian. You know, I can be over here as the DA. I can tell people to, to stay on topic, but at the, but ultimately, ultimately, the responsibility is the chairs. That's right, the gavel is yours, sir. So ultimately, the responsibility is the chairs to maintain decorum, but every member has a responsibility to ensure that the meetings are, are, you know, conducted in the most respectful manner as way possible and respect for the citizen and the public. But the chairman is the person who controls, I would say, you set the thermostat, right, of the temperature in the room, okay? And that everybody should respect the chair's determination, but the chair can. We do have Robert's Rules of Order, so, but here's some of our open meetings basics. We have to have these meetings, our public meetings, they are recorded and open to the public. They have to be posted by a certain deadline. Certain agenda items are posted in advance. They have to be on topic, so the topic has to be clear from reading the agenda item, what's going to be discussed, and what possible action be taken. It's not appropriate to take up matters that are not on the agenda. I know we have a new business category on our agendas. That is reserved for new business that you could not possibly know about within the last twenty-four hours. That's what new business is. Something that is so new, that's so urgent, that you need to take up, that it could not possibly have been posted in time. And with this type of board and the kind of actions that you make, very little should ever come under the category of new business unless it's just an emergency situation. And if that's the case, Eric and the staff will notify you as much advanced notice ahead of time. But that's what new business is for, so I know it's proper procedure, and we always ask for new business, but it's probably not very likely with this kind of advisory board to have it. Discussions permitted. If it's not posted on the agenda, okay, if it's not the item, or if it's a past item, or if it's a future item, that's not up here yet, that even if it's a member of the public, that, we're not really supposed to, to keep the meetings organized and focused. We need to really just focus on what is on the table and what's on the agenda. If somebody wants to bring something up on a different, a motion to reconsider, or something that's been decided in the past, that needs to be its own agenda item and put on the agenda. It can't just be brought up in the middle of a meeting. And once again, like I said, that's, that's not me, that's not the chair, that is the law. So if we follow the open meetings, we just stick to the agenda as best that we can. Sure.
The quorum.
Mm-hmm.
So quorum is four board members?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but if we have, there's been, and I don't remember the example, but sometimes we have to vote unanimously based on the quorum?
Right.
What is that?
Okay, well, the, it depend, okay. Here is the, the thing. We have adopted Robert's Rules of Order, okay? Now, in most state agencies and most county and, you know, public, public body boards, okay, that are appointed, if there are seven of you, you are allowed to conduct business with four. But to pass an item usually requires a, a vote of a majority of the full board. So for instance, if you guys were to have voted on something today with just being four of you, to pass that item, it would require all four votes to pass the item. Three to four is not a majority of the full board. Now, if you were to look at Robert's Rules of Order, which by the way, that's a rule that's adopted by legislatures of a very vast number of people, okay? They can, they can pass things by a majority of the quorum. But under Oklahoma law, even though we've passed Robert's Rules of Order, this is where the rules of Robert's Rules of Order and our rules kind of differ. We only have seven members. Typically, a, a vote is unanimous. It has to take four votes to pass. Now, with that being said, if there's ever a mistake, you know, let's say, you know, we're, we're rolling along, and it's four to three, and it, somebody says it passes, and it passes, and it goes to the B O C C, and the B O C C passes it, that decision has been ratified. Do you see what I'm saying? So, so even if there is a mistake, that the B O C C is kind of the catch-all for that, but if a public member would come up and say, that's not, that didn't pass, that's quorum, you know, then we could go and take another look at it. So there is catches to catch those types of mistakes, and hopefully, we won't have or have to get into that. But you're right, when it's just four, it really needs to be unanimous vote. If not, it just needs to be, it doesn't mean the measure fails. It just needs to be put back on the agenda item to be revoted, so you get at least a majority one way or the other. It's like the vote never happened when it doesn't give a, you know, a quorum. Okay. This is just ethical considerations of public service. I found this nice little guideline for planning commissions that was out there on the lovely internet website. That is just a public guidance on what, whenever, any, you know, any board serves as a planning commission, whether it's state or local or municipal level, this was out there on the internet, and so I thought it was good information to have. It's just talks about, you know, what are your considerations? What should you be thinking about as you're sitting on this board? And really, it's mostly, ethical considerations is mostly about setting aside your personal differences, just like you were, if you were a judge on a bench, you would hope they would be able to set aside their personal differences to rule on the case that's in front of them, and that's how that, that is really expected at the board. Staying on topic matters, okay? The Open Meetings Act, there are, if you violate the Open Meetings Act, there are penalties for that. That's why, topic number one, why it's important to always follow the agenda and stay on agendas, because if you go off the agenda, you might be getting into, you know, some, some issues that could cause litigation, and we don't want that. Prevents rehashing and reconsideration of matters. It's efficiency, okay? I mean, you know, a majority votes, that, that issue passes or fails, move on. If we keep rehashing the same items, your agendas are going to get longer and longer, and you're never going to get anything accomplished. Limits of liability. County, and this is, this is just, every DA, ADA is going to tell you this. Every lawyer is going to tell you this, of any member of the elected public. Your comments up here are like an exhibit, okay? We're being recorded. It's an exhibit. If you have a, a big issue, and it's a contested issue, and people are listening, even if they're not in this room, they're listening, everything you say can conceivably make you a witness in litigation, future litigation. Why did, especially in situations, I mean, I was the lawyer that when the, the Planning Commission of Oklahoma City passed an ordinance, then the, this, this commission, the city council denied it, and we filed a lawsuit over that. Those types of lawsuits can happen, and when that happens, we go and look at, well, what did those, you know, people on the board, what did that commission say? What were their comments, so that we can understand what you're, it's important to let the public know what you're, why you're making a ruling, but when you're making those comments, try to be as concise and, you know, on topic as you can be, because that protects you and it protects the county, okay? And that's all we're really looking for. I mean, most of us would like for public comments to be only as much as necessary is the, the rule to follow. So it also creates, there, sometimes confusion can occur when you get off topic, and then it opens the Pandora's box, you know, if somebody asks this question, and then it leads to another question, it leads to another question, all of a sudden, you're so far off topic, you can't even remember the original topic. That's why staying on topic always matters in these meetings. Here's the, the part that, that most people ask me when they start to get on a board or a, a city board. What are my liability? What are my risks of being in public service, okay? So litigation against the county is always a possibility. Anytime we are talking about property rights, you know, you're denying somebody a, a permit or possibly zoning for them to develop property that they've already invested in, you know, so that, that's, it can be a hot topic for a lot of people and very emotional for a lot of people, and it can create litigation. So just because it creates litigation for the county doesn't necessarily mean that that is going to disrupt you or disrupt your life. As long as you stay within the scope of your duties, which is following the rules and doing your duties, and you don't do extra, extracurricular activities outside of here with, with regard that would call into question your motive, your personal motives for a certain vote. You're going to be within scope, and you're going to be covered, and if the county is sued, you know, the county, obviously, the DA's office represents the board accounting commissioners under contract for any lawsuits, civil litigation, and that extends to this board as well as their advisory board. So you do have legal counsel for that, and you can always call in ahead of time if you ever have a question. You can always call me, and if it's a legal question that I can answer, I'll tell you. If it's a policy question, I'll leave that to you, okay, and I will tell you. So the types of lawsuits that can happen, I mean, there's this thing called a taking. It's called inverse condemnation. It's taking by regulation. They might be challenging our regulations, this, this, this board's regulations. That's the type of lawsuit. They can, they could say, oh, well, that board discriminating against me because of race, sex, age. Who knows what they would come up with? Any number of items, people can decide in their, you know, that this is why I feel like I was denied a permit, okay? I can't tell you, give you a risk analysis or factor of who may or may not sue. We've been really lucky. We don't have those, and, and I think it's because we stick to the agendas, and we follow the rules, and as long as you do that, you have that built-in protection. That's what the law is for. But those are the types of lawsuits that can possibly come out. And how we prevent them is we simply get together. We make sure that our zoning and planning ordinances are consistent with, you know, state and federal laws and consistent with case law, and we do that. We regularly look at those and, and, and make sure that they're in order, and we do it by simply following the policies and procedures that are in front of us, and that's how we can avoid litigation. But this is a good reference sheet for you to look at, just in case you are ever concerned about what your role is, and, you know, what is my liability if I act? If you act in scope, we defend you. If you act outside of scope, you will be notified that your actions were outside of the scope of what your duties are on this board, and that the county cannot indemnify you, and you'll have to seek your own legal counsel if you get sued. Very, very rare to happen, okay? But like I said, that's your check and balance on the behavior and the expectations of the role. Fairness and impartiality in the conflicts of interest. Obviously, I think I don't have to tell you guys that, and you probably already know this, that, you know, if you're the, if you are the primary contractor on a project that's up here for zoning, you know, maybe that's not a vote that you should engage in. You have a personal conflict of interest, you have a personal conflict of interest, if you're related in a certain, you know, first degree with the applicant, or, you know, you have a, a actual financial interest in the project, it's okay to recuse. You have seven other members. It doesn't mean anything, but it's probably a good idea to recuse, especially if the vote's going to be closed. You know, you don't want to be the deciding vote on, on something that's a quick way to get a lawsuit. Robert's Rules of Order and decorum. This is just a quick little guide sheet. We do have, have adopted Robert's Rules in our bylaws, and so that's why they are here, and it talks about calling a question, and when, and what you can do, Mr. Chairman. This is a good guideline if some, if a member is, you know, going off topic or not paying attention, and, you know, or the public even is not paying attention to the time that they're supposed to be talking. You can, you know, you can call for decorum, and you have the expectation of it. If things get too out of hand, you contact, you know, obviously, one of us in the room. We can contact the deputies downstairs, and we can actually have members of the public who are disruptive escorted out if that needs to be, but of course, hopefully, it never has to happen. But there are rules that, as long as you kind of follow the checklist, and if you ever were worried if things are getting out of hand, these are kind of some of the motions and some of the items that you can use to corral the situation and try to bring it back into order.
So stating the words of asking for decor, I mean...
Yeah, you can do that, but this is, this is just the Robert's, this is the formal procedure to do it. You can ask for it in any way for, but this is the Robert's Rules, and this is the authority, and this is typically how you would word the, like, you know, how you're always saying, how would I word that? How to, how to, this is, this is kind of a guideline for that. It's like a old cheat sheet to say. And any other member other than the chair can also call a question and ask for decorum. For instance, if it's our chair here that's getting out of hand, you don't get to, just because he's the chair, he doesn't get to run him up, right? So, so you, so you know, vice chair or another member can also enforce the rules. But like I said, the DA's office, we are not the parliamentarian of the body. We can say things like, according to the Open Meetings Act, you need to stick on topic, but it's up to each individual member to ensure the decorum and the smoothness of the meeting, so that it is conducted in professional manner, and is becoming of you as members, as becoming of the county.
And hopefully, this never happens, but, so as the chairman, let's just say Denise is going off on a tirade. I can, and we never say, hey, the floor is yours, but I can at that point say, okay, I am reclaiming the floor, and you are, you know, and she needs to stop talking.
Right, right. You basically say, you know, I feel like we're getting off topic. I'm going to call the question, and we're going to call it for a vote. In other, calling the question just means you're ending the debate, okay? And so basically, you're, you're ending the discussion. When it comes to the public, and I know that was another question, as long, public can sign up to speak, but this is one of those boards. Some boards, like I always say, boards are not, according to the Open Meetings Act, the public is, does not have an automatic right to come in here and talk and speak to you. But because you have in, built in to most of your items, you know, we send notices out to the public. We invite them in here to have, but they need to stay on the topic discussed. There is a, in most cases, a signup sheet, and if the, if you have a rule in your policies and procedures, as long as you post it in the back, and you post it on your website, you can limit the speaker to three to five minute, you can limit the, the speak, the speaker, and we have, and we do do it, you might have seen it in the B O C C meetings, they'll put a little timer up that'll tick down. It'll say, you have three minutes. You have the floor for three minutes, and then they have the floor for three minutes, and you can actually, you know, you can, it's your chair. You have the authority to let them go longer if you choose, but you, but if the three minutes is up, and it's time is of the essence, and you've got a whole house full, you can say, sir, your three minutes has expired. Please wrap it up. And then if they go another third, you can see the timer. It will go in the negative after thirty seconds. You need to say, I need to stop you and shut you down so another person can come up to speak, or, you know, so you can enforce the time limit.
And it's, and we haven't broken any rules by, we have like twenty people that want to talk, and after about ten, I say, hey, we've addressed this, 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 and this. Does anybody have something new to talk about?
Right. And like I said, if you, if you say, look, is there anybody here who has something else to say that hasn't already been said? Can we cut it off here? Or, and if, but if somebody insists they still want to speak, you do need to give them, I mean, obviously, I think when you say that, usually people are like, well, yeah, I'm okay. But if they really do insist to speak, and they're here on an item that is open to the public to speak, yes, but there's nothing wrong for you saying, okay, we've heard from ten people, you know, time is, you know, we're going to be here all day if we hear from everybody. Is everybody, is there anything anybody has to add that hasn't already been said? Otherwise, can we move on and, you know, see if anybody, you know, give it to them and say, you know, I don't want to discount your opportunity to speak, but at the same time, is it something that's new that we haven't already heard?
I've seen this at school board meetings and stuff, where there might be thirty, forty people with school board, says, look, we're going to take a break for two minutes, elect a speaker, and we'll give that speaker twenty minutes or fifteen minutes. Can we do that here as well?
Yeah, you can also say, is there anybody that would like to consolidate? Everybody's, how many people have we, you can at the beginning, when you open up and say, okay, how many here are, here are to speak for or against, and how many people raise their hand, and if it's a significant amount, say, you can say, well, in the effort to save time, is there any way you all can get together and maybe consolidate into a few speakers so that we're not, you know, but at the end of the day, if every single one of them wants to get up and speak, unfortunately, you know, are, it, it is, especially on an agenda item that they've received a notice, you know, sometimes it is seventy people, you know, and it just is what it is. But ho, hopefully, from what I've seen since I've been... But ho- hopefully, from what I've seen since I've been representing you guys, since I've come on with the DA's office, I have seen you all manage that, the timing of that well, where I don't feel like the public has ever felt slighted. And see, that's the other thing, too. When I talk about that liability, you get into the liability zone. When you invite people to a public meeting for the purposes of giving their opinion on a project and then you don't let them speak, that's going to be grounds, you know, for a lawsuit. And you could each individually be named in that lawsuit because nobody let them speak. But like I said, if you give them the opportunity and get their acquiescence on the record, on the video, that I'm okay with not, even though I signed up to speak, I was, I agreed not to at a certain juncture, you're going to be fine. I don't think so. It can be adopted. It would probably be something that we would, we could get with Eric and you guys could have passed like a little resolution and add it to your bylaws about limitations on time speaking, just kind of like you were talking about bylaws on, you know, extensions. You can pass that. And it can be posted on our website and posted on the back and even posted on the, maybe the notices that go out, Eric. We can probably say, if you show up to speak, you're going to be limited to three minutes.
We don't do that. And we do have a big crowd show that at the time. Can at the beginning of that meeting can we actually state that time? Or because we don't have it already in place?
I I think that you could, you could try, the best practices would be to pass a bylaw to set a time limit, simply because, you know, it protects you from anybody saying, I showed up today and had a 30-minute presentation with my boards and they gave, then they arbitrarily decided, saw me coming and decided only give me three minutes. It's just a better course of action. Anytime you give advanced notice, you're in, you're protected. So I'm not going to tell you that you can't do it. I'm not going to say it's wrong to do it. I'm going to say your best practices would be to pass the resolution. Because obviously, if you do it and nobody objects and, you know, right? But it's, I'm always the, I'm Chicken Little. I'm always the one that says, you're going to get that one guy that's going to file a lawsuit, right?
And the resolution could state that we could implement a three-minute.
Right. Right. It is, like I said, you can let other people talk, like if you have three speakers, you know, it's up to the chair. And it's all about the time limitations, it's not about limiting the public so they can't be heard. It's about time management of your meeting, okay? You can't, to have a public meeting go four hours because you let 70 people get up for 30 minutes to talk is not, it's not the purpose of the meeting. The meeting needs to be conducted professionally and as concisely and as efficiently as possible. And it's about efficiency at that point. And you can even say that at the beginning and say, how many people are here to speak? Okay, is there any way we can consolidate it for time efficiency, especially if there's multiple items on the docket? You know, you got somebody that's sitting here on item nine and item six, there's 70 people there to talk and you're just like, oh my gosh, I'm going to be here for four hours for my thing and nobody's here to talk on my thing. So it's about running your meetings efficiently. That's why it's also, you're also able to take things out of order. So, you know, if you wanted to call your docket, judges do this all the time. They call the docket and they see who's here and they'll say, how long do you think your argument's going to take, counselor? And they'll say, oh, it's going to take five minutes or it's going to take 30 minutes. The judge will try to rearrange it to make it so that people are not sitting behind a two-hour hearing, listening to, you know, a docket when their item might take two minutes. So, you know, you've been able and you have, and it's perfectly allowed to take items out of, out of order, as long as you do what you've done, which is take a, you know, take a vote and get a consensus that we're going to take this out of order. But it's all about the efficiency of time management. But yes, you could pass that resolution next month and it'd be in place. So just get it on a, get it on item. And and we've, we can get that taken care of and get it implemented if you need a time, time limitation for public. What can and can't be done on zoning. Try not to re, and we've, we've discussed this before. This is where we're talking about, we've tried not to rewrite the code to fit a situation. I know sometimes, you know, we want to please the public, we feel bad for the guy that doesn't have an attorney and he comes in here and he's asking for industrial zoning, but he doesn't quite fit that category, but he would under a PUD. The reason why we have PUDs is so that that's your kind of a way to cure the fiddle. But when we start making exceptions and we start creating exceptions for this guy, you know, I always say, teaching a dog how to hunt, you know? You, you, you teach the other people, they're like, well, he gave that guy, like this guy filed and he didn't do a PUD and, and, you know, he, he got industrial and you made an exception to that zoning, why can't I have zoning like that? You, you know, once you, once you start creating the, the, the exceptions or trying to make it fit, even when it doesn't, the, you know, the square peg and the round hole don't fit, then it becomes a sense of entitlement. Well, they've, they've, they've waived it, they've, they've changed it, they've, they've gone ahead. And then all of a sudden, you've got a zoning master plan that does, everything looks like a PUD. There's not a true industrial zoning category anymore. There's not a true residential, there's not a true. So that's what, number one, that's what the PUD's for. Yes, it might be a little bit more time consuming and, and, and everything, but individual landowners, I mean, this is their property, they're coming to here to you, and they know the rules in advance and ahead of time. And Eric does a great job of telling them what it, what is, what's required and trying to tell them what they need to do. So like I said, just try not to, try to be, understand why we don't make those exceptions and why it's important to keep those. Because like I said, there is this thing called a taking. And when you start deviating from your code, then it becomes, well, am I individually being discriminated because I didn't get the exception, somebody else did? We all of a sudden start getting into territory about, this is a, this is a catchphrase, arbitrary and capricious. We never want to make decisions that are arbitrary and capricious. And where lawyers come up with that phrase is they look at a code and they see a decision and the decision doesn't match the code. And so they say, well, they were arbitrary and capricious in making it because they didn't follow their own guidelines. So that's where we come with that. Then the PUD decisions, you know, should, we always should be encouraged when, when regular zoning regulations don't apply, this is where the category fits. You have a lot of discretion in the PUDs, okay? You have a lot of discretion, right, Eric? I mean, it's, it's wide open for what you can ask for and what you can require and what they can propose. And then plat decisions, once again, just following the code, repeat issues are noticed. If repeated issues, like exceptions, exceptions can be granted on plat decisions. They should be the exception, not the rule. And you should always consult with staff on the implications of what we're doing. Because remember, it's not about that one decision or that one builder or that one case, it's about the big picture. How is this decision I'm making today going to affect decisions that are coming in the, in the future? And decisions I made in the past. Last week, somebody asked for exceptions I didn't grant it. This week, I granted the exact same kind of exception to somebody else, right? Open meeting violations can void, if you, if you take something out of order, it can actually void the action. You know, if you violate the open meetings and vote on something or consider something that wasn't on an agenda, it doesn't matter. It's as if that item didn't even, that, that action didn't even happen. It can actually, by, by operation of law, it's voided if it's not followed. It could create criminal and civil liability for violating. Open Meetings Act does have criminal and civil penalties for individual members who violate willingly and willfully the Open Meetings Act. Of course, that would require the DA to actually prosecute that, and I won't say that that has happened. But a while back, the Pardon and Parole Board members did get popped for open meaning, willful open meaning violation acts. And they were, criminal charges were filed against them for violating Open Meetings Act. I don't know what the outcome of those were. I'm pretty sure they got resolved. But you need to be aware that, that, that if it's a bad, if you just blatantly say, I don't need to follow that. I know that, I know it exists. I'm not going to follow that. Yeah, that's dangerous territory. So we just don't do that. And it can increase litigation risks for the county. Not following the Open Meetings Act just gives lawyers the fodder to bring the item that they might not normally have been able to have any hope of winning on or reconsideration on, gives them a second bite at the apple. Well, my, the, the Open Meetings Act was violated when they denied my application. I'm going to get a judge to rule that the Open Meetings Act was violated. Now we have to, now I got a second bite at the apple. I get to come back and do it all over again. So. All right. This is your public comments. How and how, we already kind of discussed that, how and when they're allowed. Request to defer item, I know this was on there. Eric, I, I've always been a defier on you. You have a current rule. Any, anytime you want to change that rule or implement that rule, obviously, you can do so, but you need to do so by a resolution before you, so anything, any rule change you want to make, you really need to do a modification by resolution before you implement it. So, you know, obviously, I think that for efficiency of this board, and you were asking earlier, you know, how many times can they withdraw? Well, they can withdraw and repay an application view all they want. But just like holding it out in hopes six months, like continuing it month after month after month, where the poor public and, you know, grandma who's been here religiously three times in a row and they keep continuing, you know, to make her public comment known to you, and the item keeps getting continued, and that fourth time, she can't make it, and then they decide, oh, well, I'm ready, you know? It's, it's not a good look. It's not good for the public to continue these hearings. It's not good on the, the staff and, and the notice provisions to the public to keep them, to have them continued multiple times. So best practices would be, yeah, hey, let them have one freebie, let them have, maybe they do have a reason. But after that, they've made application here, they've come here, they've paid a fee, they should be ready to come up and, and talk to you about it. So, you know, maybe a one-off, let people come and get a continued, maybe they get one continuance. But after that, you probably, in the public's best interest, should maybe consider limiting the number of times they can actually ask for continuance. Or as you said last time, or one of the members said last time, making them actually prove that they need, that they, this isn't just, I'm just delaying because I'm just, I, I have a vacation. Oh, I, I, I had, I planned a vacation and I have this hearing, but I did both. And okay, that's a one-off, but the next time, it's another excuse. It's not a good, valid reason to keep you all from hearing the matter. So you have the right to do all of those things if the goal is always consistency in application and it's always public notice. So as long as the applicant knows, hey, we're, we're not going to let you have continuance after continuance after continuance. So don't expect it right at the beginning. Then they aren't going to have, they're going to have less likely to be complaining or file a lawsuit if they are denied, because you're telling them upfront, we'll give you one after that, you have to produce cause. If it's, if the cause is not good, we can deny that second continuance. Just give notice. These are the things that, that services, the DA, the DA's office offers for this board. We will attend board meetings. We will assist with Open Meetings Act and procedural questions. We can provide legal research on planning commission legal requirements when submitted in writing. Eric knows the process for doing that. We just did that the other day. On one, can offer legal options on standards of law and interpretation of statutes. I can offer you up our interpretation, but once again, it's our interpretation, like all legal advice, just because it comes from the DA, it's civil legal advice. And just like a regular litigants, you can take that advice and follow it or you can ignore it. Like, it's up to you. It's advice, okay? So there is no mandate behind anything the DA says, okay? Now, if I say, you are violating the Open Meetings Act, I'm telling you, and I'm going to give you that warning, but I'm not going to physically stop you if you just, do you see what I'm saying, decide to proceed? We will advise you the best that we can of the obstacles that we perceive, and it is your information to take and use it as you will. We can provide legal, legal assessment and risk assessments, okay? If you require it in writing, you can submit your request for legal services to Eric and Eric will send it to us. And that's how it'll proceed. Do you want a written, like an actual written DA, legal assessment? That's how you get it. And it can present, be presented to you. It doesn't have to be presented in open meeting. It can be presented to you. But if it's presented to one member, it will be presented to all. It's not like I'm going to get the DA's opinion and then I'm going to get it and I'm going to use it against this member. Whenever we issue a DA opinion, it goes out to all. So the, the, you all have the same information and you will see the question that was asked and the answer that was given. So everybody's on the same page. What we can't do, I cannot make the planning or zoning decisions for you, obviously, and cannot create, because I wasn't appointed, and cannot create policy or regulations. I can assist with wordsmithing. If you say, I want a policy that does this, I can say, okay, what, what do you want as a policy? And I can, you know, wordsmith it for you. I can put that together in a nice, neat format and I can put the resolution together, but you got to tell me the content, okay? Cannot force compliance or punish board members who do not follow the laws or rules or regulations. You know, obviously, if they are willfully violating the law, that can be reported to the district attorney's office, but once again, that would be a different kind of reporting. I'm not the parliamentarian and I cannot stop them, but board members from doing what they are going to do. All I can do is encourage you all to follow the law and hope you take the advice. But like I said, if there's a willful, willful, you know, violation that you think is, you know, something that the DA should act criminally on, I'm not going to tell you that you cannot make that complaint made, but that would be to actually, Vicky Behenna, the district attorney's office herself, not through me, okay? And I can't give you legal advice on individual interests, obviously. And I will, I don't want to do this and you never want your lawyers to ever do this. Please do not ask, ask me a legal question to be answered in open meeting on the fly without any legal research. If at all that can be avoided, I would prefer not to because that's when mistakes and errors can happen. And like normal questions, like about open meetings, open records, those are pretty obvious. But, you know, if you're going to say, does this zoning, does this zoning act comply with this federal statute? I'm not going to be able to know that on the fly. I'm going to have to research it. So just be cognizant of that. A lot of times I'll, if I don't know the answer or need that, I will tell you. You can ask the question and I'll say, I'll need you submit that for a, a legal opinion so that I have a chance to research it. And I will tell you that, okay? So that is it. Sorry, I was the only person and I'm sorry I took your time and go thunder.
We still have, oh, we still have some more questions.
Okay.
So that last scenario that you were just talking about, if something were to come up like that, we could, as a board, actually, I don't know what's the correct terminology, suspend that question, item till the next meeting until we get feedback? You know, like if...
Oh, yeah. Uh, uh, like if you, if you decide, if you need a question answered. And, and like I said, you all, even though you make your decisions right up here, typically from the board, you are an advisor. If, if there is information that has come to light, like say somebody, a member of the public stands up, and I think we had a gentleman here not that long ago that was like standing up and had some, some oil and gas type of issue that came up. And it was like, kind of like, what, what, what is this? If you have any information on any application that you feel like you need more information to be able to adequately make an appropriate decision, you can defer the item for decision and you can actually ask for the DA to help you, assist you with researching that. And that would be perfectly fine. You do not have to always make your decision same day. It's always good if you can, but if there's ever a question on anything, that's part of your due diligence and all those lovely, you know, ethical, you know, and what's your duty and what's your role? Being prepared, asking question, engaging the public, that's all part of your Being prepared, asking question, engaging the public, that's all part of your role. And if the, if a public, if the member of the public or another board member raises a question that calls into question something you want information on, you can put a pin in it and say, we're gonna have to come back to this item until this question is answered. And I'll do the best that I can, Eric always does the best that he can to answer whatever questions about the rules, the regulations. I mean, Eric is your man, when it come, he knows the back of this code better than anybody, he's, he's your man on that. Um, but, you know, if you need a legal opinion, um, we are more than happy to help you with that. Um, and if it's a time-sensitive deadline, usually, it, since these only meet once a month, I, those, that deadline can usually be met. Um, uh, and obviously, if it can't, I run into snag or something, I'll let Eric know, and then we'll make sure to, but you can continue an item and, and, and defer it to the next meeting, uh, to get information, and I'll call those people back in and say, okay, now we're gonna make the decision.
I mean, it's never happened since I've been here, but as soon as we say that, it's gonna happen.
Of course, of course, like I said, you can, you'll never, you'll never know, if you, you know, somebody tomorrow could come up here and bring an environmental engineer and say, look, there's stuff that Eric doesn't know, and the engineering staff doesn't know, and they're gonna be looking at you and be like, well, yeah, we probably need to take a look at this. It can always happen, um, and, but the rules allow you to do that, nobody says that you can't take things under advisement and come back the next meeting. I'm just saying, for efficiency, if there's no re-, if, if everything is in alignment, and everything matches, and, and it meets the code, and you don't have any questions about that, it's fine to, to vote on it, but if you, there's ever an open question, don't feel pressured to vote for something that you don't feel comfortable, where you can make that decision, you know, an educated decision one way or another, if you were ever on the fence, you can say, I would, I would like some more time to consider this. You know, and anybody can make that kind of motion. Um, now whether it carries or not, another thing.
Yeah, now, talking, like, we were talking about this time to speak and resolution, so how does that work? So, would we go to Eric and say, look, we wanna make, and then we get it, it gets drafted, and then it gets put on the next agenda, and, and discussed and talked about there, or, I mean, how does that happen?
Yeah, if you need it, if you would like a resolution, then, uh, to be added, and it would be basically a resolution to amend bylaws, and the bylaw, uh, uh, or, uh, the po-, is it policies and, what do we have, Eric, are they the, where is the, uh, it was the bylaws, right? So, it's the po-, you would have a, a resolution to amend the bylaws to include a provision, and you have resolutions, if you look through your little guidebooks, you've seen where you've passed resolutions before, it would look just like that, and you say, this is a bylaw to pass to implement a time limitation for public speaking that the chair may enforce when appropriate, you know.
And my last question, you, we know what to do with the public, but as a chairperson, if Denise is just being unruly and I, and will not follow what I meant, can we have her removed, or do we have a commissioner removed from the meeting?
Uh, you always, at the chair's discretion, you can always call thing, for things if you feel like that is necessary. I would caution it, because this group does need to, um, I've seen very ineffective boards where members can't get along with each other, that it makes, you need to do everything you can to try to preserve the decorum and the cooperation among members. And I don't know about you, but the minute you call the cops on me, I'm probably never gonna be your friend again. Um, so, just saying, and, um, and so, like I said, I would, I, I would say best practice was, would be, and if, and I understand, everybody, there are hot topics for everybody, right? People who, some people get really excited, really agitated, really passionate about certain things. We're not saying that you can't have those feelings, we're not saying you can't talk about those feelings, but I will say this, there, as my mother always said, there's a time and place for everything to be hashed out, and it's not, this is not the time or the place for that particular type of comment, we need to keep decorum, we need to keep public cooperation, and we need to present to the public a calm, uh, you know, if you're excited and agitated, what's that gonna do to the crowd back here? As I said, chair, usually, you're gonna set the thermostat in the room, if you're hot-headed, that's gonna cause other people to get hot-headed, and the one thing that we never want to do is escalate a situation. Um, so, can you do it? Yes, whether you should do it or not, I leave that to your discretion, but I would al-, always say, following the guidelines and the, you know, understanding the spirit of cooperation, that this item, you may really be at odds with this particular person on, and the next one you might be in, you know, co-, co-, completely on the same page with. We want to preserve that working relationship, because it takes all of you to do your job.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, and I'm much talking procedurally, we all have different positions.
Right.
I'm just also bringing in stuff, so when Denise is chairperson next time, she'll know what she needs to do.
That's right, she'll know how, and, and I, I hate to say this, but I also don't want to create a, uh, you know, a how-to, because, you know, I don't want to, I want Greg over here to be like, I now know how to get out of a meeting that's gonna last too long, and I'm just gonna act up and he's gonna kick me out of the room, yay, I get to go, you know?
Discussion up here, moving on, going back, and it's not on our agenda for executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Can we call for executive session for us to pull out and to have a?
Executive sessions have to be posted on the agenda, they have to be clear, and they have to have a certain statutory authority to go into, and it's always on advice at council, so I have to bless whether or not it can be go into an executive session. And executive session is very limited to what you can do, and, like I said, it would be very rare for this board to, uh, be able to do that. Um, since, uh, it's an advisory type of board anyway. And, like I said, certain items, like, you don't control who's appointed to the board. Um, you know, um, there is a procedure, like I said, if somebody, if a member, you wanted to complain about another member, you know, that person has been appointed by somebody, right? And that's who they report to, and there is a law and procedure that's in the packet that talks about how, how, how a member can be removed, okay? Uh, prior to their term expiry, and it usually takes, it will take a board of the B O C C, and it will take a report of that behavior to a member, the, the appointing member of the B O C C, and then it's up to that appointing member on whether or not they put it on the agenda. So there's very little control this board actually has over, you know, the other members, other than making other people aware of the problem. Um, and you have the ability to do that, and you've always had the ability to do that. All I have done is provided you with the statutory authority and to let you know, this is the procedure that's followed, and you know, you all don't have that authority to remove a, a unruly member, so to say. Um, um, but there is a procedure for it to be done, it's unfortunately, that decision is not gonna be in your control or power.
But it's also like, as you said, we're advisory, right?
Right.
These decisions we make here, we're making recommendations to the commissioners, they're the ones, oh, we're making the other.
Correct.
Even if we say no.
Right.
They're, they can still change.
Absolutely, if you say no to something, um, that recommendation goes up, that goes to full enter and hearing, the commissioners can obviously take your recommendation and adopt it, or they can decide not to, um, and it goes both ways, they can decide, you've said yes, they can say no, they, you say no, they can say yes. They are the fa-, final policy decision. The goal that you have is a board, is that you possess technical expertise, and that, but, and can give certain educated advice to the B O C C, that's why you have been appointed as members of this board, is to, because this is kind of a, obviously, it's a technical issue, and we're talking about people's property rights, so it's important. Um, what you do is important every day, because the individuals have property and they want to develop it in a certain way, or they want to build on their property in a certain way. And we all can understand the feeling of when, you know, the homeowners association comes in and tells you, you can't build, you can't do this, or you can't, you can't paint your house a certain color you want, like, that people get really upset about those types of decisions. Um, and so, the, 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 the key to this is because it can be a hot topic, is for this board to do the best you can to be as succinct and professional and on point as you can possibly be, and be as technical, um, and follow the rules as technically as you can be, and that's how you stay out of hot water. Now, with that being said, you know, anybody, like I said, the BS, they, they can take all of that in consideration, they can vote however, you all are advisory only, but they do rely on your expert, expert opinion and expertise, or you wouldn't be on this board, so. It usually posts at least two, two days in advance, when do you usually post it, Eric? So, it, nothing can be heard that is not posted, and, I mean, there's a, there is a cutoff, and it's in the Open Meetings Act. Special meetings are different than regular meetings, but emerg-, emergency meetings are different. It's as much notice as you can give, special means is a twenty-four hour notice at least, and, you know, regular meetings, if our procedure is supposed to, we get advanced, is what we do.
And, and, and just so we know, if, if, not that it's ever happened since I've been here, but if, if it does get a little maybe contentious, we can always take a five-minute break, go to the bathroom and do that, and let the air settle, and then come back.
Absolutely, you can ask for a recess, um, you can ask for a recess, um, and say, we're gonna take a five-minute recess on this. Um, you know, I will ca-, I will caution you this, if you've got a bunch of pe-, people out here, and they see you guys out in the hallway talking together, they're gonna be like, oh, they're, they're conspiring. Like, so when you do take that break, it's best to take the break, you know, separate, not talk about business while you're there. Um, because it's the appearance of impropriety, sometimes, not even you, you could be sitting there talking about the Thunder game, and having tickets, and then, but there's three or four of you sitting there talking about that, and a public member's like, thinking you're in the corner over there talking about the case that you just recessed, and making a pre-decision without, so, just be, be mindful.
And for the record, if you need to go to the bathroom, you can ask for a recess.
Please.
Any other questions? Thank you, really appreciate it.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
Okay. So, does anybody have any action they want to take on item number seven?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and that is just a request, we don't need to vote on that, correct? Right, okay. Alright, item number eight, discussion and possible action to reschedule the June Planning Commission meeting from June nineteenth to an altered date, due to the closure of the Oklahoma County offices in observance of Juneteenth Day. So, Eric, it's, um, we've suggested the two, we can do any day, but some of the suggestions were the Tuesday before the meeting, the Tuesday or Thursday of the following week, is there any day that you guys?
Not Wednesday?
Wednesday's church day.
Okay.
I mean,
whatever.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Right, that's it.
Right, but they'll have to decide that, but. I, the only, the only day that I would stay away from is the twentieth, which is the Friday, that would be the only day that I would stay away from.
Yeah, so, I think, we can make a motion to have it on June seventeenth, if the room, which is the Tuesday before, if the room's available, if the room's not available, then we, do we have to make another motion, or we conclude it in the same motion, to say then we look at June twenty-fourth, or June twenty-sixth? The one, twenty-fourth would be a Tuesday, twenty-sixth would be the, the following Thursday.
Right, so you, you can make it all in, in the one motion, you can say, our first priority is the seventeenth. Room's not available, then that Tuesday and Thursday, what, whatever you want to do.
For me, just so you guys know, for me, all three days work, so I can make it all work, so, if there's anybody here who has a day in particular.
If I had an preference, the following Thursday.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
But I can make it any work also.
That work for you?
Yeah.
Moment, yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so then I will make, this needs to be a motion though, correct, for retaining the date? I will make a motion to change the date of June nineteenth meeting to June twenty-sixth, based on the availability of this room. If that's not available, then our second choice would be June twenty-fourth. And if that's not available, our third choice would be June seventeen. And if none of those are available, my choice is July something.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll make one, we'll make one of those.
We'll strike that last one in the motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Eric.
Mr. Jewel, Ms. Patterson, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Okay, item nine, discussable, discussion and possible action to receive the April twenty twenty-five fee fund report and, and expense report?
Uh, if you look, there has been an increase, uh, that's due to utility permits. Uh, so, right now, we're, we're actually back in black. Cox Cable is, is laying a significant amount of fiber in various locations of the county. So, that's what that's from.
Kind of excited, some of that's up at Deer Creek. It's up in Deer Creek, I know. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to receive the fee, fund, and expense report? Roll call, Eric.
Mr. Jewel. Ms. Patterson, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Okay, item number ten, new business, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, section three-one-one-point-nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have reasonably been foreseen prior to the time of the posting of this agenda, any new business, Eric?
No, sir.
Alright, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, Eric.
Mr. Jewel. Ms. Patterson, Mr. Talbot.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.